Good evening, everyone. It is now a complete welcome. It's 6:01, I think, and I call this meeting of the Manzanita City Council to order on November 6. So we have tonight what I would call kind of a classic small-town agenda. It's got some nice practical items on it. Some of them have to do with things that we've been working on for a while, and some of them have to do with things that are relatively recent. So I'm pleased because a couple of these things have been in the works for a while, and it's always nice to celebrate the closing of some things that people have been working hard on. So thank you to everyone who is here in person tonight. Thank you, I don't know quite how to look when I say that. Thank you to anyone who is here online this evening, and also anyone who might be listening to a recording later on. So the first thing, as we always do, is we'll start with audience participation. And I'm wondering, Nancy, if we have anybody who's signed up for that in person tonight?
We have three.
We have three, okay, great.
Connie Burton.
Okay, and Connie knows how to go to the table, so she'll set the example.
Dennis Tong, 170 Beazewax Lane, here in Manzanita. When I heard that you'd be signing off on Twenty is Plenty tonight, I thought I should come and thank you all. Brad, and Jerry, and Linda, and Catherine, and Tom, and Lila. Guess when this began, it's been a couple of years, been a little while. You welcomed the suggestion, and you took action, for which I'm grateful, and I know our community is, hopefully. And I want to thank also Connie Burton, she and her husband, on their own purchased several Twenty is Plenty signs. They were the first ones to go in around town. Thank you, Connie, that was very generous of you. And before I give up my time here, I have another proposal.
This past summer...
Sales at some point...
No, no.
Okay, all right.
This past summer, my neighbor Roger and I were sitting on the benches there in front of the Little Apple, enjoying a cup of coffee. And it struck me that it was kind of perilous out on the street, right there in front of Little Apple, and Finisterre across the street. And it didn't look particularly safe to me. It's hard to see around cars, a lot of children, of course, being their height. It just, it looked a little hazardous. And so I thought I'd ask you to consider, during the height of our vacation season, creating a vehicle-free stretch on Lenina. Let's say from Fourth Street to First Street, from the post office to the visitor center. I know, logistically, there are a lot of things to consider, parking, et cetera. But here again, the idea is to prevent potential injury, if we can. And it made sense at that moment. It really looked kind of hairy out there. Anyway, that's all. Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Thanks for following through, the signs are beautiful.
Thank you, thanks very much, Dennis. Great, do we have anybody online who has a comment tonight?
We do not.
We do not, okay. So thank you, everyone. It felt like a little Thanksgiving celebration there. It's a little early for that, but we won't see you again till after Thanksgiving, so appreciate that. Next up, we have the consent agenda, which, even though most people here know what that is, I'm under pains to make sure I explain it every month in case we have people who are new to the meetings online or watching it later. So in the consent agenda, the council basically reviews and passes all in one fell swoop the minutes for the last three meetings that we've had. And those include this time, the regular session last month, October 9, the work session that we held on October 16, and then a quarterly budget work session, which was held on October 22. We also include in that approval of the bills, which are always included in the packet, so any citizen can see, yeah, can see where the money is going and what we're spending it on, which is visible and available to people every month. So I'm going to ask if any councillor has any reason to not do this as a consent item? Anything need to be discussed? Okay, great, can someone give me a motion then?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, so motion is passed. Those are all in the permanent city record now. So as always, then, we go to our city manager, Leila Man. We'll start the informational state section of this meeting with her report, so.
You may. So I'll start by, Connie mentioned this in her comments, but on 28th, we had a community summit here at the Pine Grove about housing, and it was a full house, sold out. There was, I think, about 80 people here. And I have to say, I have a long career of doing these kinds of meetings, and it's not hyperbole that that was probably the most engaged group of folks that I have ever seen in a space like that. There was just a lot of just wonderful energy, a lot of new faces in the space. I'm sure probably the mayor will touch on it later in her remarks. I won't wax on too much, but it was just, I think, an extraordinary event. And so I'm grateful to everyone for taking their time to come here. That information is really critical for us to do a good job on this plan. And so we got a great deal of feedback. The team is in the process of sort of distilling that information. We're also in the process of creating a survey. So Cody, our intern, has been working on that with the consultant team, and it's now bottled necked with me to review, and then get online. But that will be online, probably no later than next week at some point. As well as, so Josh was there and helped film it, so that there's a presentation for folks who weren't able to attend to kind of gather some more information from folks. And then our consultant team will be meeting with the Public Advisory Steering Committee in early December, so that date is TBD, but we're getting close to setting that. And then we'll sort of share kind of initial concepts with that group, and then get their feedback, and then take the initial kind of what we call code concepts to the planning commission before we start venturing into the actual code writing. So a substantial amount of work was completed, and I'm just super grateful for folks that came and participated in that. The city hall project, as you can tell, is well underway, so the exterior framing is nearly complete. Their temporary roof is already on the police building, and then they're scheduled to put the temporary roof on city hall tomorrow.
Great.
In the next few weeks, they'll finish framing the interior walls that prep us for mechanical plumbing and electrical work that will start happening on the interior. They'll also, when it dries out a little bit, or we have a couple of days of dry weather, they'll start wrapping the building, installing windows, and allowing the building to dry in, which is a pretty critical stage. We're beginning prep for the east parking lot as well. And we also completed the water tie-in on Classic Street. So we put in a new, the building had to connect to a water main. That was one of the water mains that needed to be replaced. And so that was actually a project in our capital improvement plan. So we budgeted for that, so that work is now complete. And we're on schedule, on budget, and proceeding to plan. So the city council and some members of staff and the design team will be taking a tour of the building next Thursday. the city council and some members of staff and the design team will be taking a tour of the building next Thursday. So excited to show you all the great work that's happening. I also wanted to follow up on a comment we got. I don't think it was last month, but the month before. Jeffrey Sunshine came in and talked about our park. And so we've had some further discussions with him. I want to thank him. He actually did some outreach on his own, which was great, and contacted folks that put the equipment that we have in the park and got us in touch with those folks. And I also want to give a shout out to Rick Rumpf, our new public works director, for being Johnny on the spot. He has worked with Public Works, who do, I think, an amazing job maintaining that park. But they went in and kind of cleaned up the existing swing, you know, the existing structure. We also had taken out some monkey bars quite a while ago, and Rick's already got those off and getting refurbished, and so we expect to get those installed probably in the spring, once the wet weather is gone, and then do some repainting. And then Rick did a walk-through with the structure, the folks that built the structure to do kind of a maintenance inventory, and so we'll get a report back from them, and then that will give us some indication of what the costs are to do those repairs. And if we have sufficient budget in this budget, we'll do it. If not, we'll budget for it next year. And there was also a request to kind of look at putting a climbing wall, so we're getting a bid on that as well. So I just want to thank Jeffrey for lighting a fire. We, I think, again, I think Public Works has done a really great job maintaining it, but I do think Rick and the new energy there is really helping kind of level up that park, so making great progress there. No major improvements will be done until next fiscal year, though, because we'll have to budget for that. We didn't budget for it this year. The last thing I wanted to note is, and we'll talk about it later, so I'll be asking council for approval for the Classic Street Engineering Contract, but assuming they approve that tonight, we are going to be doing some geotechnical work starting next week, so getting the geotech firms at the gate, ready to start mobilizing. We've been working with the HOA for the Highlands and the HOA Classic Street cottages, so you can expect to see some traffic control occurring on Classic Street, Highlands, and parts of Nacarney as we do the geotechnical trip.
With the county, anything on Nacarney of that nature?
We'll be on our portion of the ride away. We should be good to go.
Yeah, the county's been featured in the news a little bit lately. Yeah, okay, great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Leila? Nice mix of things. It's good. I like to hear about the the water infrastructure improvement, too, we were able to make with that. So thanks to you and to Dan, who planned that out quite some time ago. Yeah, thank you. Okay, next up, I'm going to take us through just a brief update on ballot measure twenty-nine, one seventy-nine and the results. This was the ballot measure that was unique to citizens of the actual city of Manzanita. And the the vote on that was to determine whether we would maintain the monthly billing that's been in place for a little over a year now, or go back to our quarterly billing sequence. I think we've talked about this in pretty much every single council meeting since since the initial work on reviewing the referendum requests came in, so that's since, what, spring, May? Yeah, so we've been a while at it. We got the results. They're not certified yet, so there's a process the county has to go through, and the county clerk goes through to actually certify, so I'm not certified yet. Jerry's not certified yet. Tom's not certified yet. We're all hoping that certification will occur. But also that applies to the referendum, and the results of that were this is as of five thirty tonight. Yes, vote, which means monthly, two hundred and eighty-six people, so fifty-six percent of the votes cast. No, two hundred and twenty-four people, which was forty-four percent of the votes cast, which is a pretty healthy margin, given how close some things can be at the city and at the county, so that did pass. So I want to thank everybody who who sat through and participated in the additional water study that we did, just in case we needed to change the rates if we, or review the rates if we had to go back to the quarterly system. And we have talked to a few at a few meetings now about the costs of things, because people have been curious about that and asking about it. So I got the up-to-date costs or investments from the city for this to happen, and so see where we are. So basically, between the legal fees, public information consulting, which we had to do, so the language on the material you might have seen on our website, that actually had to be approved by the Secretary of State. They're very there are a lot of stringent rules about how these things get communicated and whether you're fair to make sure that the wording is fair, etc. So between that, the additional water rate study, the legal fees, and then some smaller amount of legal posting fees, I I think this is pretty complete, but we're just over thirty-six thousand dollars. So that was the cost, and that was unanticipated, but that's been absorbed into this year's budget, and it'll be applied. Actually, that'll be applied to the water fund when all is said and done, and it's allocated. Yeah, yeah. So that is that. And does council have any questions on that?
Well, thanks for the update. I was really thankful.
Yep. So I don't think those numbers are going to change, but we'll keep an eye on it. I think actually the the county said that they have a period of, I think it's five days following the the election day, as long as the, as long as the ballots are posted and postmarked that day, they'll continue to accept them and allow for the slowness of the postal system. So the the votes may change a little bit, but I don't imagine it'll be substantial. So that is wrapped up, and we are continuing on with monthly billing, so for residents, not just who are able to vote on it, but also other water customers in the urban growth within the urban growth boundary, nothing will change. So bills will stay the same, billing will stay the same, rates will stay the same. So that's behind us now. Okay, so that's it on the ballot measure, and the next thing we've got up is a code enforcement update, and I think Mike Sims, our police sergeant, and Max Helverson, our code enforcement officer, are here to give us an update on that. Welcome to both of you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Uncertified. Thank you. Thank you guys for taking some of your time to give you an update on the code enforcement position. I made a little PowerPoint to go over by the time that I've been here.
Speak up just a little bit, Cody, that'd be great.
Great. Start off. I'll introduce myself. I'm Max Helverson. I'm the code enforcement officer for the city of Manzanita. I started July of twenty twenty-three. This is a year-to-date update from January first to November first of this year, and it gives you insight of what has been done. This is what we'll go over, the goal of code enforcement. So community outreach that has been done. Short-term rental calls for service, some tourism, tasks that I dealt with this summer, city ordinances, and the state parks. So the goal of code enforcement, based for the city of Manzanita, is to gain voluntary compliance with education over enforcement. Ways that we approach that is in-person contacts, phone calls, emails, and of mailing. Some community outreach that I've done, done some knock and talk, so I'll choose some houses, go up, introduce myself to the the owners and explain to them what my role is as a code enforcement officer. Just be a resource for them if they ever have any questions, and then provide my contact info and be in touch if there's anything that comes up. With short-term rentals, calls for service, there was one thousand three hundred and forty compliance checks conducted. The next slide will explain what a compliance check is. With the ordinance violations for the year, there was nine parking, nine dark sky, five garbage, two animal, two noises, and many public assistance. So a compliance check, there are houses that are randomly selected. I'll go on to the city website, pick ten random houses, and make sure that they are in compliance with the short-term rental ordinance, which is ten dash zero three. Make sure that they have properly displayed signs. The local agent information is displayed. Make sure that their online advertisements are in compliance, which includes having their permit number, which is the Manzanita Certificate of Authority. Make sure that their garbage isn't strung out per the standards, section four, ten dash zero three, and make sure that they are legally parked. Tourism. I spend a lot of time down at the visitor center. I had a hundred and seventeen visitor center visits this year. Some of the things I do down there is help with the wheelchair rentals. In the picture, the blue wheelchairs are just inflatable wheels. You have to push them yourself. And then there's the David's Chair, which I call the Tank. It's a very powerful wheelchair that can go through the sand. It can climb some of the dunes. I put their website up there as well, because it is a very, very cool, free device that people who struggle with walking can use. It's awesome. I hear great stories, and it's always fun talking to people when they get to use it, and it's awesome. Some other things I do is attend the visitor center for events that they do for the public. That includes some scavenger hunts. I've assisted with holiday events as well. A lot of questions that come up when I'm at the visitor center is regarding beach and fire safety, outdoor activities in the area, directions to other spots, restaurants, lost and found, and we have quarterly meetings with the Tillamook Coast Visitors Association. The city ordinances. I will go out and make sure that there are business licenses with people who are conducting work within the city limits of Manzanita. Thirty-four have been purchased. I will use my computer and have them purchase the business license from my work computer. It makes it a little bit quicker, and then just email the receipt to them. Hundred ninety-two public assists, which include lost and found property, returning it to the owners, working with adjacent agencies. That includes the state park, other municipalities, Wheeler, Ahalem, and even Tillamook County, when people have questions and need answers from them, if they might be outside the city limits. There have been a hundred and nine parking violations, sixty-four verbal warnings, forty-one citations, dealt with seven camping vehicles, eight dogs at large, and seven dark sky. And lastly, I spent some time in the state parks as well. At Nahalem Bay State Park, this year I've issued a hundred and forty-eight citations. Twenty-two verbal warnings, and I've dealt with five dogs at large, and the regular business check up at Oswald West State Park. The day use area will be open until the thirtieth of this month, and then it's all going to be closed down. Thank you.
Questions from council?
I have a couple of things. I commented David's Chair. I agree with you one hundred percent. When my moms come to visit, once they had that, we reserved it for her. She was so thrilled to be able to go out on the beach and go all the way to the north end and back. So it was really fun to use that and to see other people use it. So if you've got somebody that is not mobile or not comfortable on the beach, I would encourage you to use that. It's a great. One question I had is, in all of the statistics you gave us, I saw some of the STRs were things like garbage. How are you finding calls coming to you that could have been handled by the complainer? I know there's a short terminal across the street from us, and it's run by one of the local how many callouts you're getting that like I did, someone could have just called the management company versus you?
I also top my head the exact number.
Not exactly, but a slot a little or?
Just a little. Most of the time it gets situated with just a phone call to the management company. Every once in a while, if one doesn't answer, it comes to me, and then I'll just make an in-person contact with them and let them know.
Thank you.
When you identified parking violations, did that have to do with short terminals, or was that?
Yep, yep.
And how do you identify that? What?
I go off of the ORS eight eleven five fifty, which makes a list of where you can't park, for example, fire hydrants, yellow curbs, blocking driveways. Can an ambulance or a fire truck get through? Making sure the overflow parking. I've gotten calls with too many cars.
Unable to, okay.
Yep, usually contact the renters and let them know, and right now, as of right now, it's went smooth.
Okay, that's great. And then dogs at large. What do you do with dogs at large?
Most of the time they have callers on them, so I'll go to the general area and find the dog and make the phone call if there's a phone number. There's been a couple of times where there was a complaint with a dog, and I couldn't find the dog. So it was unfounded, but I still attempted to see if I could find.
And with dogs at large, sorry to cut you off, sometimes it's the dogs find the owner is lost. So if we can find the dog, the owner will find it's true. We'll we'll find the dog, and then the owner will know to somehow call the police or call somebody, and it's yeah, so. It it goes down many different ways. How do you deal with?
The thing that concerns me is we don't really have any place to put dogs in the county. It's just, so it's you have to find the owner or
It's a long drive.
Yeah, yeah.
I've been fortunate where there's somebody in Manzanita that will take the dogs.
So you've had to take some?
I've I've taken them to a house because it was the dog that I found was near the location.
Okay.
And I just communicated with them, and the owner was found.
Two things, if I could just jump in, that's I'm sort of, I think that's worthy of highlighting. I didn't really see the code enforcement position tracking down business license fees. So Max will tell me, hey, there's some roofers over on Fifth Street. Have you talked to them? And I'll say, I didn't even know they were there. So we send out the bulldog, if you will, kind of, and he just walks away, and literally, it's like, do you have a business license? Well, let me help you with that, since you don't, because he can check immediately. The records are right there. He can charge them right there. So I just think we didn't see that coming when this position was talked about, and and I think it's just something very large to highlight. And also the relationship that we've sort of forged with Tillamook Visitors Association with Nan Devlin, which most of you know. She talks so much about Manzanita and this being the model for code enforcement for the rest of the county, and sometimes scratches her own head on, why are these other cities not jumping on? Like the success she's getting from the reports that she receives from Max, she's happy with them, and and that's just a relationship that's continuing to build over the last year, or here at the app that you've been here. So I think those two things are worth the
I'm curious, because I appreciate your point that you weren't expecting a business license to turn into a piece of Max's job, and and the way you describe your job, you you really do have a broad portfolio. How do you kind of do you have like a predetermined pie chart that tells you you should spend thirty percent on this and fifteen on that, or or is it constantly in flux?
With business licenses, I'm always looking, since I can pull everything up on my computer. If I see something, I may just look it up, but try to spend equal time on everything, and then evenly distribute it.
Are you going to do it all that state part-time?
Make some more runs up to Oswald West.
And have you had it sounds like I'm expecting you to have a lot of positive feedback from the community, but has anybody given you a hard time for being needed?
Every once in a while, but you know. It is what it is.
I just want to say, Max, it's really cool to have you here in town. I know you're vocal, born and raised, and now a part of the police system here, which is your ultimate goal, is to get certified and be a full-time officer. So it's a great step in the right direction for somebody that, you know, comes straight out of our community, so it's cool. And Max pulled up while I was walking with my granddaughter, pulling her in the wagon, and he started chatting me up, and the next thing I know, she's got a Manzanita police badge on her. So, you know, it's a great thing. Max, tell me, I get confused about our interaction and our police force with what goes on in the state park and the beach in particular, because, you know, recently received a letter about somebody driving on the beach and being a nuisance there. and being a nuisance there. And, you know, frequently what I get in response to this is that, you know, we're really not able to do much of anything because that's the park's authority. But I know you're going into the park and you have authority in the park. And then you told us about the seven camping vehicles and I'm kind of thinking that they're probably along ocean where that it's going on. Am I wrong about that? Okay, so can you just kind of tell us what your role turns out to be when you hear about? You know, you're talking about fire safety on the beach, you know, how does that work?
So with fire safety questions, I'll be at the visitor center and people will come in and ask like, can we have bonfires? What's the regulations with fires in the summertime? How far away from the grass do you have to be? And making sure that you put the fire out with water and not with sand and have people walk on it.
But if you see somebody that's too close to the grass or something like that, do you have to call out to the park and ask them to send a ranger out or what do you, what's that? How's that work?
Okay, if I pass that to you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if we get a complaint about fire that's too close to the grass, that's a concern for anybody. And just as a public safety person, we're going to go out there and address that. If we see it, then yeah, we don't need to call the park ranger for this. We, we know, so to clear it up or make it more muddy, the contract with the state park allows us to venture into the state park and write their day use fees and respond if need be. Ultimately, the beach is the jurisdiction of the state police. So if somebody is driving on the beach, you mentioned that earlier. Well, just driving on the beach is annoying to a lot of folks, but they actually can drive on the beach from October to April, from seven until noon. They can't go out and like do cookies in the beach and be that kind of annoying. And there's, there's things that they could do that would rise to our attention in which we would go contact them. It's rare because most of the time when we contact them, they're not doing cookies. They're just driving on the beach, which is illegal. Yeah, there's no, there's nothing saying we can't approach a fire if we feel that it's posing a danger.
Yeah, if somebody was on the beach, driving, being annoying, or cookies or?
Yes, they have artists.
Can enforce that or?
We could write citations for that. Yes, yeah. So there's a little bit at hand, the state parks involved, the state police involved, and then Manzanita, depending on how far north or south we are with our adjacent beachfront.
Okay, okay, great. Thanks.
Sure.
Thanks, Max. It's good to see you in action too, because I remember not that long after you had started, we were, I think it was pouring rain and you gave me a lift, which I don't usually solicit from the, I just want to say this. She gave me a lift from the Public Works Building back home and you were just being yourself and we were coming down. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I remember which street it was, but there was a couple and they had a kind of a large dog that was off-leash. And they were all having a great time and you just said, oh, hang on a second. So you just rolled your window down, just natural and friendly as could be. And said, hey, I wasn't sure if you were aware, but there's a leash law here. And you're like, oh, oh, they were visiting, so they put the dog right there. You just handled it nicely. And I just remember thinking at the time, that's the essence of the personality and the approach that we really want for enforcement, which is education first and a chance to make it right before we do citations. And it's not to say that those aren't required sometimes and you have to, you know, take it up a notch or two. But I think, I think you're a good match for the, for the work that's needed. And I've heard several compliments from citizens who've had a good experience working with you. And so we're glad you're here, as Tom said, and thanks to both of you for the work on this.
Yes, keep up the good work.
Guys. So I think it's time to dive right in then to an amendment to guaranteed maximum price contract with Co-Built. So this has to do with managing our budget and managing our resources for City Hall and now finding ourselves in the position that we can afford and stay within the budget for the project.
Yeah, so I would be happy to do that, but if I may request mayor that we jump back real quick. Oh, I missed. Start with the Classic Street Connection Project Engineering.
I just wanted to go right to old business.
We can, this is. Switched it up on.
No, I'm not going to skip Classic Street. There is no way we're going to skip that. So how about I turn that over to you, Leila, and I'll keep track.
And we can set a great lead and I hated to.
We'll save that for later. I'll repeat it. Go ahead, take us through, because this isn't a really important project for us.
It is. So the city did, so this is part of the Classic Street Connection Project, which is part of the appropriation we received from the state of Oregon to put in necessary infrastructure to support needed housing. This is also the city's number one project in the capital improvement plan and our number one project in transportation systems plan. So staff did a formal request for proposals for this project. We received, and we issued that on August first. And we received three responsive proposals to that RFP. We, there was a committee of four of us. It was myself, Dan Weitzel, Rick Remfer, and then actually Cody was also on that team. We reviewed those RFPs independently, scored them based on the criteria and the RFP, and then held interviews with all three teams. We got three solid groups of folks to apply, which is always great. It's nice to have choice. And we conducted interviews. We also scored those independently. And then the composite score of both the proposal and the interviews is what ranked the proposals. And so Windsor Engineering came out on top. And so we issued a notice of intent to award. We did not receive any protest to that notice and began negotiations with Windsor, which we've been, I've been doing over the last month or so. We have now come to an agreement. So Windsor's role will be to do all of the design engineering for the water, the storm, and the road, which will extend from Lenida to potentially to Nacarney. We're also exploring an east-west connection that may actually cut through the area of the Highlands. So we've got an alternate there that might be interesting, but you know, it's, we're just exploring it right now.
Too soon to tell.
Yeah, too soon to tell, but it's great to have that as an option because there could be some substantial benefits to that. So the scope of work. Let's get through the design around an accelerated timeline. Frankly, a hundred and five days, business days to get us to construction drawings. And then we would competitively bid this. I do want to note that we are exploring value approach to bidding. So in Oregon, you're required when you do a competitive bid to take the low bid. There is an exemption process we can go through because there's some unique conditions for this project, including slope stability, dealing with sand in our environment, that we think we have the potential to do an alternative process to bidding, which allows us to evaluate qualifications in addition to price. And there can be some real substantial benefits to that. So we're exploring that. I'll probably have more on that for you next month. But Windsor will help us through the bidding process. And then Windsor will provide construction administration throughout the construction. We will do the, so this contract includes kind of all of that work. We will be doing a separate contract for construction inspection. One of the things that Rick brings to the table, our new public works director is he has substantial experience in roadway design and construction. And so there might be some opportunity there for cost savings to have him help do some of that construction observation, which is great for us because it saves money and allow that money can then be put towards the construction of the project. And then potentially some of our public works staff can do some of that as well. So, so that part will sort of work out later, but that's just not included in this contract. So I just want to be clear about that. So what I'm asking council to do is we've gone round and round multiple times on this. And we finally landed on, I have the number in my head, but I want to make sure I have the right one. For the total cost is an amount not to exceed four hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. And that includes, as I mentioned, all the elements of this design, all the way through construction documents. And it includes a geotechnical analysis. So I mentioned our geotech is gearing up for that. And that's a substantial component of this project because we are dealing with some slopes to get that ten-foot easement on the east side. So that's included in part of this. And then as well, having landscape design as well as traffic design to help us with the roadway portion of this. So this has been budgeted for in our current budget. This dollar amount is within the range of what I consider to be acceptable in a normal engineering project. You anticipate about fifteen to twenty percent of your total ca, of your construction costs to be for engineering. So this is right in that, that realm. So I feel good about where we are. This is a really solid team. They were referred to our RFP through Cannon Beach. They've done a number of projects in Cannon Beach, a number of projects on the coast and come highly recommended. And I'll say so far, just working with them and getting through a tough negotiation. They've been great and really responsive. And so I look forward to working with them, presuming that you approve the contract. So I put a resolution in here for good measure and I'm asking council to approve that resolution, which would delegate authority to me to execute, to approve the contracts and allow me to sign that contract. Okay, happy to take any questions.
Yes, thanks. Comments, questions?
One question, the four eighty-two, seven hundred, you said was part of the budget. So that's coming out of funds we had already expected, not the state appropriated funds.
Yeah, so we anticipated, I think it's on page, we anticipated a project sort of in the realm of about three point four million dollars, which is what we budgeted for. We are currently estimating that to be a little less. So what I budgeted for, that three point four is inclusive of this engineering contract. And I should note too, that our grant requirement with the state requires that they review our RFP. They review the contract before we sign it and that's, that's all been done.
Yeah, that was going to be my question. So there's oversight not only from the city attorney contract, but also from the state funding source.
That's correct. So city attorney drafted the initial contract. We got the contract from OBDD. I sent that to city attorney. We amended the contract to reflect some of the terms that were required, some indemnification language and a couple of other things. So that, so our contract is now consistent with the requirements of a state's contracts.
So would the state weigh in if they thought the the percentage of money being spent on engineering was too much? Is that the kind of thing they get involved in or?
They don't get involved in that level of detail. It's just making sure that there are certain conditions that they have in their grant. Indemnification keeps coming to mind, but that's included here. I could pull up the details if you.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, so I'd hear a motion then, if someone would like to make it.
I got a motion to approve the resolution to delegate authority to Leila, our city manager, to execute the contract with Windsor Engineering.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Great, big step forward.
Yes.
So, so let's just, let's just take a minute to go through the, the timing, just at a broad level for people. So approval of this tonight, on the ground soon and working with these, these folks. And then, is it February you said was about the timing they'd be finishing up? And then about that time, we go to bid or RFP. The type of, the type of process we might go through is still up for some discussion. So we'll work on that this winter. You'll advise when it's time for that. And then RFP approved, so by early spring, March, April, something like that, actual construction could be beginning if all goes smoothly.
Yeah, so like kickoff at morning, nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, geotech starts next week. Yes, it's, we expect to be done with design. We will have at some point during that, kind of an open house for the community to look at what that design, primarily focusing on kind of the roadway aspect. And then, yeah, presuming everything kicks along, there's no big surprises. We should be under construction sometime in March. It's our hope at this point, and we're anticipating a six-month construction window. We have to pave before this time of year next year. So our goal is to be complete October of next year and then close out by the end of December.
And the biggest question we have in front of us now really is just, you know, in a simple way, I'd say what the matchup is between the list of desires we've got for this project. Because this is really, literally, we're working at three different levels to accomplish goals the city's had in place.
Yeah.
For a while with the budget between the grant and what council is allocated on top of that to make sure we can get as much done as possible. So it's the next couple of months, working with these folks that'll let us know how close we are or if there's, we're in a spot where we have to make some compromises and have some discussion about that. Is that fair enough?
Right, yeah. So there's kind of three stages to an engineering contract. You get to thirty percent design, sixty percent, and then you get to ninety. And at each stage, we do cost estimation. The beginning stages will be doing kind of an alternatives analysis. And so a lot of that stuff, it's similar to what we did with City Hall. We have kind of what we call target budget design. We say, we got this much money and we have to accomplish all these things somehow within that budget. We did it with City Hall. I feel confident we can do it here. But what that looks like at the end of the day will really depend on how much it costs, how complicated some of the issues are. You know, slope stability is going to be the biggest issue that we're going to face because we anticipate having to put in some retaining walls. That can be complicated. So, so we'll be going through that with the design team. And then I will provide you guys updates as we have them every month to let you know kind of where we're at with that. And then we do want to do some sort of engagement with community members around the traffic calming elements of the project to get some feedback on that. So if there are design choices, we want an opportunity to get feedback from the community. And then we would approve kind of a final bid package. You all would actually be signing off on. If we do this alternate approach, you actually have to adopt findings in January. Similar to when we did the CMGC process, we had to do an exemption from competitive bid. We're still doing competitive bid, but we're doing an alternate process that allows us to just consider qualifications. Because you can get, when you do a low bid, you just have to take the lowest bid. And it may not, I think there's probably some, yeah, still some scars left from past experiences. But I've talked to some other city engineers that have benefited from taking this approach. It's a little more work on, on our end, but I think at the end of the day, you end up with, they call it a best value approach for a reason. So folks that are familiar with how to work in sand, how to deal with slope stability in sand makes a big difference. And it allows you to, you know, ultimately you end up with less change orders, less complexity. You can stick to the schedule. Unlike the GMP model we have with City Hall, you know, they can't just go over and charge us money for it. Like they are committed to a cost based on how they, they bid for that project, unless there's something we missed and then we, we pay for that. So, yeah, so that's, sorry, I'm too budgeting for me.
No, it's actually not. It's a lot of money. And a lot of people paying attention now weren't here for the early city hall discussions. So I think even though for some people it's a fairly routine, I always want to talk about it as if it's not a fairly routine and people can understand the sequence of it. I think the other bit of background work in here that I'd like to acknowledge and give credit for is with the two homeowners associations. So yes, yeah, I've been to you and staff for that work, but also credit to the people in those homeowners associations who are very willing to work. And, and there's always back and forth, you know, and then these things. So it sounds like we're on a good track for communication with them. And although it's everybody's road, they're the ones most impacted by it. So.
Well, and it's, I appreciate you bringing that up because next month I hopefully will have two memorandums of understanding with the Classic Street Cottages HOA and then actually Encore Properties, who owns the property that we're looking to get that ten-foot easement. So they're in many ways gifting that to the community. And so part of the back and forth, the reason why it's taken some time is because. is because that will then set the stage for the actual easement itself. So we'll, we'll save some time on the backend. And one of the things I committed to both H O A and the other property owners that um, they shouldn't have to pay for any of this. So we'll be reimbursing them for legal fees that they're incurring in order to basically gift the community uh, ten feet of land on their side of the property. So um, I really do appreciate the uh, support, attention and commitment of both of those uh, groups to, to seeing this project happen. And so we're hopeful that the geotechnical tells us that we can do it. Um, we don't know until we get to the ground what we're dealing with. So.
Yeah.
And if, if it doesn't, then we will find literally a path. We will figure it out.
Okay, thank you very much. It's good. Really glad to see that. We're real forward. And before I jump to old business, we're gonna take care of one more piece of. Which is a budget committee appointment. Uh, and is Nina?
She should be online, yep.
Okay. Hello, Nina?
Hello. I'm just gonna.
Do you want to go ahead and explain what we've got coming? Or would you like me to do it and you chime in, however you like?
I'll start and then you can chime in.
Great.
Um, can you see my screen?
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay, so we are here tonight. We have two, sorry, my, just trying to get this to come up. There we go. Okay. We have two seats on the budget committee that come up uh, for reelection on, or that, I'm sorry, that expire March twenty twenty-five. So I'm here tonight to kind of start the process on that. Uh, tonight, I'm asking council to approve one member of council and one member of the budget committee to serve on this election committee. I will be the member of staff that serves on the committee. Uh, once that's done, we'll get together and meet and review the selection criteria and bring that back to council December fourth to be approved. Then December thirteenth, the application will open. It'll remain open for three weeks, closing in January third. And then we'll meet again to review the applicants and be ready in February to uh, make recommendations to council to approve. Oh, and I forgot to say at the beginning, the two members that are up, uh, the two seats that expire are Jim Dop and Kit Keating.
Time flies with these appointments.
It does.
Yeah. It's a three-year assign, it's a three-year commitment, correct?
Is that correct, Leila?
It is.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I should know that. I look at it on a spreadsheet.
Don't, don't worry. I was on it and I thought it was a four-year for a while. So it's.
Track of time.
It's okay. So um, this is great. And again, I'd like to just commend Nina and Leila for working ahead of the game here to, I mean, March is a ways away, but just to do it orderly and so people know what we're doing and when is nice. Because it's a big decision to uh, apply for these committees and it's a real responsibility to serve on them. So.
Absolutely.
Nina, thank you for the work that went into that. So we do need to, uh, we do need a recommendation from council for a member of council to um, serve on the budget committee.
I would like to recommend Jerry to serve as the council representative for the budget.
Excellent.
Okay, as long as you're approved by Tillamook County sometime next week, I think that'll be. Great. I presume you're gonna accept that? Okay.
If certified, I will serve.
That's great. Do I, we need to vote on that? I don't think we do, do we?
No, you can make a motion once you.
Okay, great. Okay, and then uh, the matter of a, a member of the budget committee, the citizen member of the budget committee.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Joy Nard to be the citizen participant. She's just been an exceptional budget committee member. And I think it's a really good experience to go through that interview process.
Okay, great. Joy is here. She's nodding, so I'm assuming that's okay. We do not want to appoint anyone who is unwilling to serve, so that would not be good. Okay, well, that's great. So uh, can I get uh, I guess just a vote or approval from council for Jerry and for Joy to be the two people who work with Nina on that selection process?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? All right, we will see you along the way. Nina?
Nina.
Is there anything else you want to say on this one, Nina?
Nope, that's it. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you for joining us. Okay. Now, old business.
How we can get the G M P amendment?
Well, do you want to do the city logo first?
Oh, right, now I'm jumping.
Sorry if this is contagious. I'll.
It is.
Almost. Next month, that's always my goal. Do better. Okay, Leila, where are we with the, the, the bird selection?
Bird.
Oh, yes.
Well, it's not just one bird.
Okay.
Uh. We, so we put out a survey at the request of council to the community. We got about sixty response, or fifty responses. And about sixty percent voted for, let me see, go to my computer. Ta-da, it's rolling. There it is, two seagulls.
Okay.
That's how we do it here, two birds with one stone.
Oh.
So that's, that's what folks said. And so um, this will be substantially what the logo looks like. Josh and I are gonna work together to make it a little more um, uh, friendly for when it prints in black and white. So you might see some, unless you object or super committed.
I think we can authorize you to.
Okay, yeah, so we're gonna do some things to make it a little more um, yeah, transferable, so to speak. So that is it. So I would just appreciate a motion to approve this new logo. And then I will say in terms of timing, um, my hope is by the end of the year, kind of all of our communications, so things like the agenda, letterhead, those sort of electronic documents will be updated by the end of the year. Uh, Nina just received a huge box of envelopes, so we're gonna keep those. And then by the time we move to new city hall is when we'll update the print materials that we have. So our business cards, things like that.
So the ship is going away.
The ship will be going away, but it will still be on my business. I just seems kind of, we don't have an address. We have an address, but we haven't moved. And so I do kind of want to wait until we get into new city hall to spend money on reprinting things like that. So unless anyone objects to that, um, but everything else will be branded in this way. And we'll kind of come up with a style guide. I'm hoping to get a PowerPoint that's consistent.
Um, yeah, that's good.
It'll be great. Cause we have documents that go out with the logo, but like different fonts and it drives me bananas.
Could just a quick question, this will be the, the basis of the logo for all departments, the police?
It will be, yeah, and police kind of have their own sort of, but it'll be like both.
Public works.
Uh, public works, it will also be on public works. So this is part of the issue, is that we had sort of rogue. You know, it's fine, but it's gonna be standardized across all departments. And so I think it's really important that there's consistency.
As a marketing person, it is very important.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll roll that out over the next couple of months.
May I get a motion then for approval of the logo?
I move to approve a two-bird logo.
I second.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? All right.
Now can I talk about the chance?
Yes, now we can talk. Yeah, and, and let's, let's try and go easy on the acronyms again.
Yeah, so this is uh, I'm requesting council to approve a second amendment to the guaranteed maximum price of the construction manager, general contractor contract with the city. So that's a contract that we are paying Cove Built to build city hall. Uh, y'all approved an amendment, a G M P amendment last month that were for a whole host of different things. And then we said we were coming back this month with the solar addition. So the price in here, the amendment is for seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-six cents. And that gets us our entire solar array, all the conduit, electrical, everything we need to have a grid tied system that will be installed on the roof of the police station. Um, so we hope and expect that this will be the last amendment that you'll see to the contract, barring any unknown thing that may come up. But um, I feel pretty good about where we are right now financially. And this came in under what we were estimating too. So we've already completed the design and so this is just for the construction. So Cove Built uh, did a competitive, you know, posted this for bid. We got a bid from Elemental, who also did the design for this. And they've done some other projects on the coast and been great to work with. So they'll be doing the um, installation of this. So council's asked to approve a resolution and authorizes the G M P amendment and allows me to execute that agreement with Cove Built. And that brings the total contract amount to four million, seven hundred and ninety-nine, five hundred and thirty-five um, thousand dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Good. Other questions or comments from council on this one? Again, so this is another one, uh, we've been talking about this and working on this for some months now. So I'd just like to point out, as I usually would, um, it's not a routine decision to do it, but it's become routine because we worked on it. So the lack of conversation or discussion or questions uh, tonight is simply because we've been working on this for a while and connecting with.
It's also responsiveness to the, to the community because they had really requested that we have the solar. We didn't think we could do it initially, but we, because of some good cost savings, we were able to do that. So.
Yeah, we originally value engineered it out. But if we remember, like if we go back in time to the resolution that city council passed in twenty twenty and again in twenty twenty-one, that set the goals. And those design goals for city hall and sustainability and resiliency were two of those things. Uh, so this team designed a building that could handle this. And then one of the other goals was that it was a cost-effective building. And so we initially did not include solar. Um, we had a heavier contingency to make sure that as we got through the ground improvement, which was complicated and costly, that we weren't over, overreaching. And so once we got through the ground improvement, um, we've always had this on our, we call our add-back list. Like, okay, here are the things we're taking out of the project so we can build the project. And assuming we get through the dark stages of this project and we feel confident, then we will start to add things back in. So what you did last month allowed us to add a couple of things back into the project. This is one of those things. And, and the reason for it is we're harkening back again to the beginning. When you get to the end, you always gotta go back to the beginning. We're always starting with that. Those are the goals that were set forth by the community through the extensive outreach that you did uh, um, through Manzanita lessons, the outreach we did in the initial phases of uh, this design process. So this has been kind of a thread that's been weaved through the project throughout. And we committed, um, well, staff committed to you to implement those goals if we could financially. And we believe that we can. So cool.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Heather. Didn't mind to talk about that. That's absolutely true. I remember how strong the feeling was about that. And thanks for the reminder about the decision for debate on this project. So, all right then, so may I have a motion from a counselor on this?
I make a resolution approving guaranteed, the guaranteed maximum price amendment to the Cove Built LLC, C M G G C contract, authorizing city manager to execute the guaranteed maximum price amendment for approved change order, adding a solar panel and electrical connections to Manzanita City Hall project.
Thank you. We have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Brad. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? All right, I'm with the solar.
Can I just add for a second?
You may.
Catherine, um, you touched on this about how, you know, we've passed a lot of these things. And then the next two things on the agenda are gonna be similar, that there's not gonna be a lot of discussion about this. Um, and I've seen some stuff recently in social media and letters that we've received about, um, you know, we're a bunch of stony faces sitting up here, all nodding our heads and then voting in favor. Um, and, you know, people really, to understand how we end up having these meetings, have to understand that we've gone through work sessions with this. Um, every time we have a council meeting, Leila meets with each of us individually to make sure that we've been prepped on what's coming in the agenda. Um, you know, we can't, because of open public meetings, we can't all sit together and say, hey, what's going on? But every so often, you know, I might have a call with you or, you know, and of course they can't be serial calls to make sure that we're all in the same frame of mind. But we do a lot of work that's not taking place here at this meeting. Um, and that's why we tend to be in agreement about these things. So I just wanted to get that off my chest, cause I think there's a lot of, people sometimes think that we're all just being led around by the nose and we're not.
Okay. I'd like to expand on that, just to give up an example. If everybody remembers at the beginning of the seller talk, I was not in favor of a grid-based system. After further investigation, behind the scenes work that I did, talking to Dan, talking to some of the electrical stuff, we do have a solution. So there will be a generator as well as a grid-based system. And there are plans for battery backups, not necessarily attached to the solar, but within the I T structure and within the desk. So even if we lose power, we've still got the ability to charge those batteries and use those batteries. So that's just an example of.
Right.
That work you're talking about that we're not necessarily discussing because we already have.
Okay. Yeah. Did you have something?
Yeah, I did. If, if you wouldn't mind, since we have a little time, I want to remind folks of something that we do in the staff report. And I try to have a full staff report when we do a resolution like this or we're adopting an ordinance. And I know you guys are familiar with this, but just as a kind of a reminder to the public, um, we list the history of prior actions and discussions in the staff report. And one of the things that I've done is that this actually links to, if you click on it, it takes you to the packet from that particular, is it gonna highlight it? No. Um, well, anyway, it showed up on my computer, but it takes you, it just links you straight to the, the packet. So it is to remind folks that every action that is taken um, in an official capacity or discussion that's occurred is, is documented there. Because sometimes too, the decision makers may change over the timeframe. In fact, some of you weren't here when we adopted the G M P. And so it's, it's a resource I put in there for, and you know, if you're like me, you'll be like, what did we do in twenty twenty-two? And so you can go back, read the packet, maybe watch the video, but it, it helps kind of reduce the barrier for folks for information. Um, but that's a tool that I use to kind of show. So you can see, we've had about eight conversations. And then I made the one specific to solar in there. So if someone wants to go back and hear that conversation, they can do that.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me add that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tom. Okay. So uh, we're gonna go on to an ordinance then, twenty-four oh five, which has to do with reducing the speed limit to twenty miles per hour in residence districts within the city of Manzanita. And Mike Sims is going to share a few things with us.
Oh, uh, well, going back real quick to the city logo, it looks nice. I have this tattoo of the same city logo and now I need to add a bird. I have one, two birds, yes.
Just no end to the commitment required to do your job.
I was in it. Okay, thanks for having me. I understand this is like the second reading of an ordinance. And um, that means like within thirty days from today, it'll be an ordinance as long as you guys are good at discussing that today. But first, I'd like to start off commending and thanking Mr. Tong. Uh, you know, we'd like to include you. Would you like to have a seat with me? Okay, so anyways, thank him because, you know, as you know, we all know, he's been vocal probably from the beginning or maybe the first guy, but twenty is plenty. It works. Um, it works along with so many things. Um, uh, of course, the T S P within the comprehensive plan. But furthermore, right, right now, as of the second reading, uh, three things are going on. Uh, well, or have gone on. Police department sort of identified, uh, and the survey uh, that we put out to the folks, identified some areas that we could probably pay attention to first as far as reducing these speeds. Of course, again, twenty is plenty is reduction for speed for the whole city. But we want to focus on some areas specifically first. And we sign those areas with not the great yard signs, but actual signs. That's part two. So police had kind of. That's part two. So police had kind of identified these areas first. Part two is communicating those areas and giving public works a map. We've got like a work staff memo going on. So they know where we're at. We know where they're at. They're ordering signs if they haven't already. They're going to start building the signs. And then what we'd like to do is 30 days from now is, is really saturate those targeted areas that we've identified to get those signs first. Obviously, we want to, you know, promote safety with these signs. That's, that's the whole idea, along with promoting safety and, and, and reducing that speed limit for pedestrians and bikers. We're also identifying ClearView Vision triangles, which are residents and, and houses that are in these first sort of target areas. I wouldn't call it phase one, but we have Max out right now, not just talking to people knocking and talking on doors, but these are secondary homeowners, some of them. So he started sending letters out, hey, we've got this ordinance. It's, it's been around for a while. However, we're making a, a push to, to, towards this comprehensive plan, which includes the TSP, which includes 20 is plenty. So here's a nice letter saying, hey, we've noticed that your property has a bit of a violation regarding the ClearView Vision. So again, when we reduce 20 miles an hour, when we reduce to 20 miles an hour in these targeted neighborhoods, we're also focusing on another, another few ordinances. And Max again is instrumental in that. He's kind of handling that. Public Works is handling getting those signs, building those signs and then distributing those signs. 30 days ish from today, we'd like to, as soon as that's, as soon as that's an ordinance. Is that my time?
No, can you? Can you tell what ClearView Vision is?
Yes. ClearView Vision, it's an ordinance that Manzanita's had for a long time. And what it does is sort of promote better visual sight. So at a four way intersection where we, and not really in a commercial zone, but it would apply there in a residential zone. Sometimes it's hard to see through those corners when, when you're going straight and you want to make sure that you're avoiding traffic. And what happens is ClearView Vision states that 25 feet from the corner of that block, if you can imagine a four way intersection, just focus on the one corner, 25 feet from that corner along the property line and the right of way. Everything fences, bushes, shrubs, trees should be brought down to about 20 or two and a half feet or so. There is, there is a specific measurement. But what that does is as you approach the intersection, now you can look across and so can everybody else. We've got some growth and some bushes and some trees that have really taken over. If you start really noticing ClearView Vision, you'll see that folks have built their property fences to that Manzanita standard and ordinance. So the corner of their fence is actually cut off or cut shy or it's cut lower. So ClearView Vision would be defined as, is exactly that. Taking an intersection and making sure it's as safe as possible. And again, this is not a new ordinance. We're not sending Max out to start ticketing folks that are in violation because their bushes are, this ordinance has been around for a long time. It just happens to fold into the safety aspect of our TSP and comprehensive, et cetera. We link all of those together because that answers.
Right of way.
Right of way, yes.
The word, as Mike said, we're focusing on the bike and pedestrian rights of way that were identified in the TSP that also aligned with what the community said. And staff are working together to identify where right of way needs to be cleared. And ClearView Vision needs to be established to help facilitate additional safety for pedestrians and cyclists. So it's simple stuff, but it's necessary. And it starts to create an environment of safety for, for folks. Because as Mike mentioned, there's a number of corners that you don't do that as well as it could.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, I see one.
Joe?
I have a question on the 20 is plenty signs that are by the windows. I'm not sure what they're going to be used for. And my friends will tell you, then on occasion I will swear, especially on the golf course. But, and I like good puns, but that third sign I think is not worthy of a city. It just offends me.
You can put one in my ear.
I agree.
Okay. We noted, we'll let people decide. They don't have to, they don't have to choose that one if they don't want it. And, and I, yes. And I'm not sure, but hang on, I forget. When we entertain comments from here, can people online hear or do we need to repeat?
They can.
They can. Okay. Thanks. Sorry. Go ahead.
Not sure I understood. These, the, the, is this artwork official signs or are the?
No, we haven't really.
I'm talking about posted traffic signs that are recognized by state law.
And I think that's important.
That's our project. These are fun and, and can be handed out. But for this project, 20 is plenty, we're talking about enforcing just those signs that the government posts. And it wouldn't be in somebody's yard or right of way. It would be enforceable signs posted.
These are, if homeowners care to put it on their own property, I'll take it. I just wanted to be clear.
Thank you. Yeah.
No, we hadn't really talked about that. So thank you for the clarity and the opinion. One more? Yes.
In making these safety improvements, was there ever consideration of painting white pedestrian markings upon Carmel along the lanes?
We'll cross that bridge when we get there, but that's like a larger city project that we will likely embark upon when we have bandwidth to do so.
Somebody's radar?
It is.
Yeah.
The TSP, which is our transportation system plan, which was the project that happened a while back, was adopted officially adopted by the planning commission council last year this time.
Yes.
Ish. Yeah. So there's a whole host of projects in there and they're all, they're all designed to, almost all of them are designed to improve safety. And so the longer term goal for, for the city and for council will be to implement the things that are in that plan that have been identified. The question for us as a council, I think for really within this next, it's fair for me to say it, this next year will be of all the things we need to do, how do those particular pieces get prioritized? And how do they fit in with the other work we have to do? So water systems, road systems, pedestrian safety. And I think, I think from all of the, from all of the opinions and perspectives we've heard throughout a number of, of communications with the public. I mean, the, the desire for safe travel on foot, with or without kids, with or without dogs, on bikes, as well as in our vehicles is really high on people's personal priority lists. And that's good. What we haven't done yet is put a price tag to that to say, in order to achieve that, here's a long plan, you know, a couple of years worth of work to get there. And here's the cost and here's how it fits into the budget and here's how we're going to pay for it. So that's, I think, work we'll be looking at. I mean, at the end of this year, as we start to think about the next, next cycle for planning for budget and for priorities for the council next year. So there's definitely more to come on that. But this is not really intended to be an open discussion about all of the things we're going to do. And there are more coming. It's more right now to just focus on, are we ready to adopt this? Or if there are there any concerns about it before we go forward with it. So Connie?
Could we also check in with NAN and tell them about the post visitors association about their grants and whether?
Yes.
Their grant?
Yes. The answer is yes. No, and really that's going to be, that's going to be a part of it. Pushing the, perhaps pushing the envelope a little bit for what can be funded from who? As some of those, as some of those requirements have shifted about how tourism tax money can be spent. Absolutely. There will be no stone unturned in terms of grant monies. Yeah. Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Manager?
Yes. We'll just have to weigh it with other prayers.
Yes, exactly. Yep. Exactly. And I mean, that's, that's the rub. Because nobody up here would say it is not important to work on that. But we may end up having to say, we'll do a little bit of this and a little bit of that because we've got other projects that are of equal or maybe greater importance. So that, and that's the, that's the trick of it all. But yeah, yeah. And is the transportation system plan still posted somewhere on the website? If somebody was interested in following up?
I know for sure you can get it on the, if you Google Nahalem Bay TSP, but it's a good reminder. We'll make sure it's posted on the COT plan.
That would be good. Yeah. That's the first piece. Yeah.
But the COT plan, you adopted new policies. So Gold 12 has the updated TSP policies. And it just reminded me that I needed to follow up on the TSP ordinance amendments, which have been in process for a minute. So.
Those will be coming soon. You know, if you're interested in the topic and you're particularly interested in safety, there are really interesting plans to, to look at because there's a chapter that was done for the city of Manzanita, a separate chapter for the city of Nahalem, a separate chapter for Wheeler. And then there's an additional chapter that looks at what might be possible if all cities wanted to come together and do some projects together. So it's quite a, it's, it's more than a wish list, but there's a lot of wishing in there because there's not much funding for it yet. But if we decide that that's a priority, that's what we'll go after. Yeah. Good. Hey, is there anything else on this before I ask for a motion?
Yep.
Would someone like to move that we adopt ordinance 2405 at the second reading?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance by reading title only. So that would be council ordinance number 24-05. An ordinance of the city of Manzanita, Oregon, reducing the speed limit to 20 miles per hour in residence districts within the city of Manzanita.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right then. Onwards.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor.
Very much.
Yes.
All right. Another ordinance, 2406. So this is also one that we've been working on. And this has to do with some amendments or more housekeeping and timing oriented around short term rental ordinances. So do you want to take that, Leila?
Sure, I do. So these are just a few housekeeping amendments that relate to changing the timeframe for when renewals are required and when inspections are required to help align with staff's workload, as well as clarification of the signage to make sure it's visible. And the last adjustment was connecting it to the dark sky ordinance and repealing the language that's in 1003 and having it connect directly to the dark sky ordinance.
Is there a further discussion, question or comment from counselors?
I just wanted to make a comment that this is the second reading. So once that's done, this will go into place in 30 days. Or is this an immediate 30 days?
No, there's no declared emergency. You have to declare an emergency to do that. Yeah. So it would be 30 days.
Yeah.
Assuming there's no.
Okay, good. Okay. We'll notice with no further discussion because again, we have gone through this and staff has come to share information and we've discussed it in prior meetings. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 24-6, reading by title only. Amending section one, section B4, section B, is that L or I?
Four I.
Four I, section 5A and section 5B of ordinance 10-3, establishing rules and regulations relating to short term rentals.
I second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you to Scott and Chris and all the work that went into giving that the next level of organization for staff on that. So.
Scott and Chris, thank you.
Yeah, it was good work. All right. We've got one last session or part of the section of the agenda, which is a counselor update. So Brad, would you like to go first?
I will go first. I wanted to give everybody our usual update on communications that we've had with the general public. First of all, our frequently asked question section of the city website since our last council meeting received 235 visits. And the actual often asked questions document that are the questions we receive even our mailbox or otherwise, we publish the questions and answers. So they're available for the public, received 45 downloads. Since the last council meeting, I gave a few updates on some emails we received that often asked questions document has been updated as of yesterday. Thank you, Josh. And I decided because the document's getting longer and longer, I know a lot of people go back and refer to it. So anything that's new or changed is now highlighted in yellow. So if you go look at that document, you'll see the links at the top where something's been added to an existing link or a new link's been added. If you click it, it goes to that section. And the highlighted in yellow section is what's new. So it'll be easier for people just to go and read the new sections instead of looking for them. As far as emails, since the last council meeting, a little bit slower this month, we had four emails. A couple of those were related to water billing and cadence questions. Those have been added to the FAQ. So the details are there. We also had interaction as Leila recognized about the playground. So that was part of our questions there as well. And lastly, we had one about vehicles on the beach and someone wanting to know if we could potentially restrict that. Thank you, Leila, for your quick and thorough research on this. Leila actually reached out to Oregon Parks and Recreation because that's technically under their responsibility. There is actually a process by which we can request that private vehicles are no longer allowed on the beach. Of course, emergency vehicles, park ranger vehicles. And there was a specific part about if somebody was taking a boat to a ramp or something, that that is just by law allowed. But we have decided to move forward with that process. And Jerry has graciously agreed to start working on that. So we're at the very beginning stages, but we will start working on a request to the OPRD to not longer allow personal vehicles on the beach in Manzanita. We'll keep you posted.
And there will be time for public comment and input throughout that process.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty, I don't know how long it will take, but we have to write a, a, it's an amendment? Or a request?
It's a request, yeah.
And Jerry's going to actually at the work session next week, kind of go over that process and sort of kick us off. But there will be a public hearing that will be part of that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I hope you get certified.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Yeah. Jerry?
Yeah. So two things. Last Monday, the mayor actually was invited to join a group down in, he met down in Rockaway, ended up doing a little tour of parts of the Sevenberry Trail through Rockaway up to Wheeler and further up along the Nahalem River. She was unable to attend, so she sent to me in my, in her stead. And it was a great group. It was Sevenberry Trail Foundation folks organized it. They had a staff person from Merkley, Senator Merkley's office come by. County commissioners, two of them were there. One, Mary Faith Dellen, the newly elected member was not yet certified. So it was okay for him to be there, although that was essentially a quorum of the future commission. But what struck me is that the project is, is a really big deal to Rockaway Beach and to Wheeler in particular. Folks from Bay City were there as well. Manzanita, because of where we sit off the trail, we're not going to have the same focus on that, on that project as these other communities. However, we probably have as high a percentage of resident interest in the project, I think, as, as any of these towns. And so there inevitably will be opportunities for us as a city to aid that process going forward. One in particular is, there's been a lot of talk tonight about the RTSP. And there is going to be a push to try to do something to make the bridge between Nahalem and Wheeler more bike and pedestrian accessible. And so we will certainly have an opportunity to weigh in on that. And I haven't mentioned to you lately yet, but the director of the foundation, Sevenberry Trail Foundation, on her next swing through this area wants to sit down with you. So I'm sure that'll be a fruitful conversation. So it's just, it's just good to see these other towns. Because of the way the trail runs, they're going to be much more at the forefront of the local push. There is a chance for us, I think, to be supportive neighbors. And, you know, we, the, the whole project from. And, uh, you know, we, the, the whole project from back towards Timber or Fernone or wherever it starts, all the way to here is many, many, many years into making, but we can certainly look at the more local aspects of the project as something that we can expect to see, uh, come into play in the next several years if things go well. And if people, uh, work together and if money, uh, materializes. So I, instead of worrying about a 10, 15, 20-year odyssey, we should just focus on what's going to happen locally. And, uh, I think, I think we'll have a role to play. Uh, the only other update I have is related to the lawsuit pending against the city. So on October 18th, uh, there was a, a conference hearing, uh, scheduled by the judge just to check in with the parties and figure out where the thing is going. Uh, I sat in on that via Zoom. Um, and it was at that, uh, session that, uh, the parties agreed to a hearing on November 15th on the city's motion for summary judgment. So the, the hope is that, from the city's perspective, is that the lawsuit will be resolved at that point. Uh, certainly not on the day of November 15th, but as a result of the hearing on that day. And, uh, summary judgment motion is just a way of disposing of the case without having to proceed to a full trial on merits, which would be significantly more expensive and, and presumably would happen sometime in the early part of the new year. So we should have some news on the lawsuit to report, possibly as early as the December council meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, I'd add to that because I've, I've been, I've promised to keep an eye on the, the legal fees for things. So the clock is still definitely ticking on that. We've got more work to do, but we're up to about a little over $16,000 in legal fees now to, to work through that lawsuit. Okay. So, um, I want to say a few words about the comprehensive plan. Uh, it's been really interesting and energizing to work with the citizens who have volunteered to be on the advisory committee for that. They've been working really hard and still have more hard work ahead to do our best to reach pretty much everybody in town. And there's been also a particular focus on the business community, which is great. And so, um, there's a lot more work to be done there. And I, I think at this stage, it's, it's a lot of more informal conversations and meeting people where they are, uh, seeing what input they have for the plan, but also making sure they understand all of the different ways they can engage and all of us can engage in that planning process. And so was it just last week you were in here? That was the 28th, right? This room was packed. This room was packed with tables and people. And I didn't participate in the table exercise, um, because I wanted to just watch and see. And I, it was amazing to see people really focused together, working and looking at maps and visuals of the community, talking about what kind of opportunities we might have for future housing, where they would be, people's thoughts about it, people's objections about it. And it takes, it's a real commitment to show up to something like that. And we had 70 plus people. And I would say, which I think is the greatest, every, everybody, everybody out, well, I looked out and I thought there are, there are a large number of people I don't know here. And that is fantastic. Uh, we had a good range of age. You know, we're always looking in our community to see who under 55 shows up, you know? And under 55 and under 40 were well represented. We had one child, as far as I could tell, going around who was a toddler whose parents thought, um, they could be a part of civic discourse is fabulous. So, um, but it was really good. And I, uh, I'm learning a lot, uh, working with our consulting company about how you take all that energy and all that information and all these maps and, and turn that into something that we can tangibly see and understand that expresses what people's hopes are and what people's concerns are. So there's a, a lot more work to be done. We're really just beginning in, in many ways. But it was a very well attended session and, uh, nobody, one person left early. I watched the door. That's another thing I do. I watch the door. Uh, everybody came and stayed and really put their all into it, which was, um, tremendous and just really nice to see. So, and a lot, of course, a lot of work behind the scenes is what makes an evening like that possible. So I would just encourage anybody who's here or is listening tonight, keep an eye out for the future community meetings. Our next one will be sometime in February. The date's going to be scheduled here pretty soon. And to keep an eye out on the website where we are continuing to put updates and information about the plan and what we've been, what we've been learning, what we've been hearing from the community. So, yeah, I think that's it for me.
Catherine, I want to just jump in on that a little bit too, because I didn't go to that. And I was reticent to go because I was worried that all of a sudden we would have a quorum. Um, and so I didn't attend, but it's available to be seen on YouTube. Um, and it's a really easy link to jump in. And hearing all the excitement about this, I'm going to go back and watch it.
I have no idea how it translates onto YouTube, but you can, you'll tell us.
It's amazing. Good.
Okay, cool. All right, good.
Hey, before, uh,
Yeah.
you go to our next, I just, I misspoke. I said the, uh, motion for summary judgment in a lawsuit is on November 15th. It's November 22nd.
Okay.
Okay. And also I was at the, uh, comp plan meeting and it was stunning, as you said. And that's, the amount of people that turned out didn't really surprise me. The, the makeup of the crowd was stunning. I, I.
That's neat.
I don't know a lot of folks in town, to be honest, uh, but I didn't know a lot of people that night at all. And usually you would expect the folks that would turn out for a public meeting would be sort of the usual suspects. And there were some of the usual suspects there, but it, it was, it was at least half, uh, of a new crowd for me. And the most stunning thing about it was, as you said, the relative youth of the crowd. So I have since had a couple of conversations with, um, Cody or, or Hatfield, uh, intern, and also a couple of members of the, um, the public outreach, uh, committee, uh, to just compliment them on. I, I assume that that committee is responsible for having turned out that crowd. At least in part. And if so, that's a, a very good early indication of the, the work that they're doing. So I appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you, Jerry. Linda?
I'm going to pass.
Okay. Tom, anything else?
I've got a couple of things. Um, first, a shout out to Cody, uh, because there's a couple of things that I'm working on with him. And he's just been a pleasure to work with. So one of the things that I'm working with him on is doing the interviews for the planning commission vacancies that are coming up. And there's three vacancies and the time for application is closed now. We have three applicants. Um, and so, uh, we have a working group that includes myself and Karen, Rida Kirka and Cody. And we met this morning and we made sure that we were all on the same page about, um, the scoring system and the questions that are going to be asked and who's going to ask them in what order and all of that. So we've got our plan for, it's next week, I think we're doing the interviews. Yeah. Um, and, uh, so I'm encouraged that that's, that's going to be a nice, smooth process. And I'm impressed with the applicants that we did get. Um, and, uh, you know, it's a little disappointing that, um, there's three openings and three applicants because, you know, I'm assuming that, well, I've looked at their applications and they're all very qualified people. So, um, that, that's heartening. You know, you always wish that you'd see more than the number of vacancies so that there's some selection that you really need to do. But anyways, uh, and that's not said to belittle the process at all. Um, the other thing that, um, I'm working with Cody on, uh, and we just got started on this on Monday, really is, uh, I've been talking to Leila for a while about wanting to, uh, adopt a city code. And, uh,
Leila's been talking about municipal code for a while too.
Well, yeah, but Leila's had so many other things that have just taken preeminence that, um, you know, but this is something near and dear to me. Um, and so, uh, I've talked to her a few months in a row about this. And she told me that she had Cody working on an aspect of this and, uh, having to do with pricing out consultants who can help us with that. And I thought, wow, a consultant on a city code. Who knew? You know, I thought you just hired a lawyer. But, um, anyways, uh, but Jerry and I felt like this was something that, you know, we could get a start on, you know, given our legal backgrounds. And Leila communicated to me that, um, her familiarity with the city code in Milwaukee made that something that was kind of an easy template for us to work from. And so we've downloaded the table of contents from that. We've started looking at all the various ordinances because the ordinances currently are only catalogued according to the year that they were passed and the order within that year. And it makes it finding the law in the city of Manzanita, wearing it near impossible. This was the reason that we had this problem about changing to a monthly billing system and amending that ordinances. Cause in the workup to it, we didn't catch that. Um, and this will make that a whole lot some more simple. So, um, so Monday it was Cody, it was Leila, it was Jerry and I, uh, having our first working group on this. And so I'm excited that we're actually starting to move forward on this project. Um, and there was some, we, we had some discussion about whether maybe the comp plan needed to go forward first. And we had some discussion on Monday about maybe these things really need to go together. So the, the group working on the comp plan has some understanding about how it fits into the other basic laws of the city of Manzanita. And I think that we're going to try to move these things forward at once. Um, so not that they'll happen all at once, um, but at least that we'll all have some idea about how the whole system fits together. Um, and so that's exciting for me. Um, and then just, uh, one other thing, which as I'm looking at the agenda, um, and the ordinance 2406, which amends 1003 in this section and that section and the other section. And so, you know, one of the things that I've been trying to do is make it so that, you know, if you found 2406, you'd go straight to 1003 and, and see what the accumulated version of that now looks like. Um, and so, um, Leila's working with Nancy to make sure that we get that as a total completed thing. Um, so that when you do try to figure out what's going on in that particular ordinance, you've got the whole current law in one place.
Great.
And, um, so those are the things that I've been working on, um, aside from that rigorous campaign schedule that I had. Um, and, um, so it's been an interesting month.
Tom, if I can ask a question for the city code, um, some people may not be familiar with. You're basically organizing all of the ordinances and laws, so instead of having bits and pieces, it's, for lack of a better description, a container that someone can go to and find what they need without.
You can have a table of contents that calls it out by subject.
Yeah.
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 And then your ordinance is like this, the one we just did for 1003. So we have been updating the ordinances as they pass and get adopted, at least since I've been here. But you would then amend the city code instead of amending an ordinance. So once you establish the code, then you would have an ordinance that amends a certain chapter. And then you, that gets updated automatically.
And then you can actually see the full statutory history. So that, you know, 1003 was adopted in, uh, 2010, but it got amended in 2014 and it got amended in 2018. And you get an understanding about how we got here from there. Um, but it's, when it gets done, it's going to be great.
It's far superior.
Sounds like a big job.
This is good. And this is just another example of just like with the, behind the scenes with the financials, how the money comes in, how the money goes out, how, how many times people have to process something versus a system doing that for you with all the right controls in place. So I'm always, I try to always mention that when it comes up because there's been, that's been a lot of the behind the scenes work over the last three years. And there's been some excellent staff work done to, to get that in place. And this will be the next. Yeah. Thank goodness for people who get excited about working on that. That's not my cup of tea. So that's great. So I love that. Love the variety up here on that. So thank you very much. Is there anything else before we close tonight?
Early.
Okay. Well, relatively. So I'm going to, I'm going to call the meeting, uh, closed at 7:42. Thank you, everyone, for being here.